There's some tough ones in there.
There are?
There are some tough ones.
I looked for my Christmas tie and I couldn't find it. Do you expect us to all wear those ugly Christmas sweaters to our council meeting?
Good evening, everyone. We're so glad that you're here tonight. It's December. You have like a list of a thousand things that you could be doing tonight, but you're here and we're really grateful. And we're especially grateful to our students. Raise your hand, students, if you're getting an award tonight. Awesome. We're so proud of you. You're gonna get like your 15 seconds of fame today and lots of pictures taken. You're gonna know exactly what it feels like to have paparazzi following you. It's gonna be awesome. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everybody. We love this time of year. This is our last council meeting for 2019. It's hard to believe that we've come a long way in a short time. So, I'm always amazed. We're really excited about 2020 in Gilbert. Some of our students know why we're excited about 2020. Does any of the students that got here early wanna say really loud why you're excited about 2020? Okay, hold on. Why is Gilbert so excited about 2020? Come here, show everybody. He got to learn a little bit about Gilbert before the meeting. Why?
Because it's his 100th birthday.
It's Gilbert's 100th birthday. Thank you. Gilbert turns 100 next year and we're just really excited about all the great things that we have to look forward to. We love honoring our students and we are especially grateful for our sponsors. So, we wanna highlight both Sal's Gilbert Pizza and Culinary Dropout. Culinary Dropout will be especially interesting to our teachers. We love our teachers. There is no better profession in Gilbert, Arizona than that of teacher and we are so grateful for them. If you are a teacher or an administrator or a staff member at any school, not just any Gilbert school, but at any school anywhere, will you please stand so we can recognize you? Thank you to each of you. I hope you get a very well-deserved two weeks off. In fact, if the mayor had any power, she would grant you an extra week. But I wanna send my own kids back to school after the two weeks is up. All right, I need a helper. Can you come be my helper? All right, come on up. It's really easy and I promise you'll do it exactly the way you need to. So, in this bucket right here, we have the names of all of the teachers who took the time to fill out an application and submit a student citizen of the month. Will you pick one? Because guess what that teacher's gonna get? A $100 gift card to Culinary Dropout. It's okay if you don't pick your own teacher. She'll still love you. Or he will still love you. Okay, tell us who you got. All right, we have Mr. Bess from Legacy Traditional Schools. Is Mr. Bess here? Oh, okay, awesome. Thank you. We'll make sure you guys get this. Thank you for helping me. What's your name?
Skylar.
Skylar, I love all of the stars and the snowflakes. You're ready for Christmas. Good. Do you wanna tell us what you asked Santa for? No, okay. It's like giving away your birthday wish. It will never come true. So, yep, good idea. Don't tell us. All right, we do this in three groups pretty efficiently. So, we'd love to have all of our students who go from to any of the elementary schools, Ashland Ranch Elementary, all the way to Islands Elementary. So, if you are a student citizen of the month from one of those schools, A through I, come on down and Councilmember Taylor is gonna help you. And I forgot to introduce my council. That was rude of me. I don't do anything alone. I have this amazing team. We have Vice Mayor Eddie Cook, Councilmember Scott Anderson, Councilmember Amy Yentes, Councilmember Bridget Peterson, and Councilmember Jared Taylor. Valerie is gonna take photos for us. Valerie makes the mayor's office work. She's gonna take photos which will be available both on Flickr and on Facebook tonight. You are also welcome as parents to come down and take a photo when your student's name is read and we'll just show you how it's done. It's pretty easy. And then we take a group picture after each group. Okay? Is everybody good? All right, follow the leader.
With that, Mayor, our first school is from Ashland Ranch Elementary, Diane Perez. From Bridges Elementary, Jackson Zier. From Burke Elementary, Rhett Lewis. Yeah, we'll have to send him a nice picture. Also from Burke Elementary, Mary Ann Taren. From Kelray Ranch Elementary, Taylee Finch. Oh my. Mayor, we're just gonna have to stretch you somehow. From Chandler Traditional Academy, Delaney Van Zijde. From Chaparral Elementary, Keon Banks. Also from Chaparral Elementary, Anthony Ross. From Charlotte Patterson Elementary, Jude Franzin. The Beatles song, Hey Jude? From Christ Greenfield Lutheran, Marie Torre. From EduPrize School, Henry Wyatt. From Gateway Point Elementary, June Bradford. From Highland Park Elementary, Xander Surwinski. From Higley Traditional Academy, Skylar Varisco. Oh, Varisco. Varisco, okay. And our last elementary in Group A from Islands Elementary, Kelsey Ballard. You got more? All right, we're gonna do one a little early. From Christ Greenfield Lutheran, Haley Dawson.
All right, Group Two is the rest of our elementary school students. We also wanted to let you know, we know that it's a school night and that most kids have a half-day tomorrow and some of our older kids have finals. So, if you need to leave in between these two groups, now would be a good time and that'll help open up some chairs for some of the others that are here as well. Thanks. Group Two, all of the rest of the elementary school students.
All right, Mayor, our first school from Group Two is from Leading Edge Academy, Zara Sadula. From Mesquite Elementary, Preston Dudes. From Oak Tree Elementary, Melissa Bramwell. Oh, she's surprised. From Patterson Elementary, Kristen Creekmore. From Pioneer Elementary, Lea Schu-Wolz-Giller. I hope I got that one.
Tell us how to say it.
Lea or Leah? From Pioneer. No, okay. It may have been right, Mayor. Okay, from Playa Del Rey Elementary, Sophia Vincinsky. Vincinsky, yeah. From Power Ranch Elementary, Aishu Khan or Yisha, Aishah Khan. Now, from Riggs Elementary, I cannot butcher this last name. So, Ellie, you're gonna have to help us with your last name. Villa Pondo. Ellie Villa Pondo. Thank you. All right. Nate Pierce. From Santana Elementary, Vienna Nate Pierceki. Mayor, I am improving. Thank you. From Settlers Point Elementary, Candace Montoya. Oh, teacher needs one. Oh, yeah. From Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Grace McDonald. From Spectrum Elementary, Lucille Lucy Ricks. From Town Meadows Elementary, Kendall Mosley. From Valbista Lakes Elementary, Diego Castillo. From Weinberg Elementary, Alexandra Bonnar. From Weinberg Elementary, Carter Enwin.
All right, that concludes all of the elementary schools and now we need our junior high and high school kids to come on up.
You jinxed yourself.
I know.
Oh, with high school kids.
Oh, small group.
That was a good trivia question. He just said, "What are the presents for?" And I had to tell him they were decorations. Sorry. I wish they had something in them. That'd be more fun. All right, we wanted to let especially you guys know because you're the cream of the crop of Gilbert. You know that, right? Okay, I'm here to tell you that you are. And we do Student Government Day once a year and applications are live right now on our website. So, if you wanna check out local government, you get to shadow a member of our team and learn all about local government because we're trying to recruit you guys to work in local government. Either get elected or apply for a job with the town. Our town assistant, her name's Monica, she's amazing. She is like really young and has worked for the town since she was 17 years old. So, come join us. We have a lot of fun. All right, that was my plug for recruitment.
Good job, Mayor. All right, our first high school is from Campbell Verde High School, Brendan Kalalang. You gotta be more exciting, Mayor. Ah, there you go. Oh my. All right, from Canyon Valley High School, Devon Willows. From Cooley... Yes, you can ask a favor. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh. There you go. From Cooley Middle School, Ava Rumit? Okay. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Kendall Payne. From Gilbert High School, Andy Nelson. From Greenfield Junior High, Anthony Ace Washburn. From Higley High School, Michael Anthony Vergadamo. From Leading Edge, Gilbert Early College, Ivan From Leading Edge Gilbert Early College, Ivan Cabrera. From Legacy Traditional School Gilbert, Prune Moda. From Payne Junior High, Ryan Williams. Mayor, we have one more. Oh. From Perry High School, Patricia Yango. From South Valley Junior High School, Cameron Colvin. Nope. And then we have another South Valley Junior High, Avery Redden.
All right, thank you all for coming. That completes Student Citizen of the Month and we'll start our council meeting in about two minutes.
So microphone will be on. If you, we've never typically used it, we typically use this. Okay, and then it's just this arrow, so basically I will just pull up, um, pull up your presentation and I'll hit, you know. Hey Valerie, Valerie, is it, is the clipper set to work on the computer? Okay, so it's kind of up to you, I guess, as to.
You can't, yeah, I mean, you're standing right there, so you can just arrow key, but.
But you can also.
So right arrow or.
Oh, yes, good to see you as well, how are you? Good, good, thank you for sending that back.
Um, I don't know, no, I think you're it.
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
I love following your antics on social media.
That's what everybody says, thank you. I enjoy it, I enjoy the antics.
I think we're recruiting someone to do the Pledge of Allegiance right now. Looks like we might have a taker, do we have a taker? Okay, we have a taker. Woo, that was close. All right, we'd like to welcome you all to our last meeting of 2019, which is exciting for all of us, December 19th. And we just completed our Student Citizen of the Month portion and we will turn the time now over to Councilmember Yentes to introduce our special guest. And will you pull this way just a little bit? Keep going, keep going. So you're in the camera, okay, I think you're good.
Normally we have boy and girl scouts here, a troop to do the pledge of allegiance, but tonight, uh, we don't have any in the audience. But we recruited Catalina and to our surprise and pleasure, she's actually a Cub Scout too. So Catalina, we're really appreciative that you're jumping in and volunteering. What are you asking for for Christmas this year?
A scooter.
A scooter, I hope Santa's listening. Catalina, the flag is right over here, would you mind starting us off in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, that was perfect. And since we normally give these pocket constitutions to our Cub Scouts, we will just give you one of these and your dad can help you read it and we hope you get that scooter this Christmas. Round of applause for Catalina.
Thank you, Catalina. We'd like to invite Pastor Eric Jones. We're not supposed to have favorites, but you might be one of our favorites. From Evident Life Church to the podium to offer our invocation.
Well, Merry Christmas. I think it's on, there we go. Merry Christmas. Mayor Daniels, Vice Mayor Cook, where's the hat? I really was enjoying that. Oh, for the prayer, okay, all right, all right. And council members, Merry Christmas, what a great day. I want to start, before I pray, I want to read from Isaiah, chapter nine, verses six and seven. Says, "For to us a child is born, to us a son is given, and the government will be on his shoulders and he will be called wonderful counselor, mighty God, everlasting Father, prince of peace. Of the increase of his government and peace there will be no end. He will reign on David's throne and over his kingdom, establishing and upholding it with justice and righteousness from that time on and forever. The zeal of the Lord Almighty will accomplish this." And so what a wonderful time of year, the last meeting before the end of the year, but also the last Thursday before Christmas. And we get to celebrate what happened just over 2,000 years ago as the Creator of the universe sent His Son to rescue and redeem mankind. And it's just such a blessing. So what I'd like to do is just offer a prayer of Thanksgiving at this time, let's bow our heads. Lord, we thank you, God, for, for what you've done for us, for Christmas. We thank you for sending your Son to save us, to rescue us, to redeem us. Thank you for making a way for us to have peace here on this earth and peace everlasting. Thank you, Lord, for the freedom that we have and the fullness of life that we have because of Christmas. Thank you that all who come to you, that you receive us as we come to you through your Son Christ Jesus. And Lord, I thank you for the community that we live in. God, I thank you for Gilbert, I thank you for the leaders. I thank you for those who serve here. God, I thank you for those who, who risk their lives, who protect us. God, I just pray safety over every one of our first responders. God, I pray wisdom over our leaders, over our mayor and the council members represented here. God, I pray for families in this community, for your blessings to be on marriages. God, that you would turn the hearts of, of children to their fathers and mothers and the hearts of mothers and fathers to their children. And God, at this time, I pray for all of those in this community that need comfort, that you would bring just the special grace of your comfort, even this season, this week, during this Christmas time. If there's despair and anxiety, Lord, I just, in Jesus's name, I push that back. And I pray for peace and joy and hope to rise up in every heart in this community in a special way. And again, Lord, I just say thank you for this season. Thank you for what it represents. Thank you for your Son Jesus. And it's His name that we pray. Amen. God bless you all, Merry Christmas. And my wife says hi too.
Please share our love with velvet as well. The clerk will conduct the roll call.
Mayor Jen Daniels.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Yentes.
Here.
Form is present.
Thank you, Lisa. Our presentations and proclamations consist of one item tonight, a presentation on the 2019 Needs Assessment Report. Melanie Dykstra is here. I saw her giving blood yesterday as we had a blood drive in the town. Nice work. Talk about needs, talk about filling a need. Way to go.
Mayor, council members, I'd like to introduce our consultant who will be coming up to do the presentation tonight. It is Dr. Lisa Zorita and that was actually her daughter that we recruited for the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'm very pleased to have had the work done by this group and look forward to her reporting out to you and covering the information.
You're already part of the family, you've already.
Yes, good evening, good evening. Thank you so much and it's a pleasure for me to be here on behalf of the Williams Institute for Ethics and Management. We worked with you in 2014 for the first needs assessment and we are so pleased to work with you again and see all of the innovation and new ideas that are continuing to spring forth for your town. We, as you know, there are several purposes for this assessment. Some of them are listed here, but they include strengths and gaps and opportunities, priorities, resources, recommendations, short and long-term goals, program and fiscal considerations, strategic planning and helping to build community connections. So I understand you can't see the slides. Let's see if we can get that. Ah, she's working on that. I'm going to keep going for, for time's sake. But many purposes for this assessment. Our approach is to conduct this with a research sample. And so we are able to move forward with a 95% confidence level in research terms that just says that we are doing a number of approaches in your community, including focus groups, a listening session, a faith community summit was a part of this, quantitative and qualitative surveys, interviews. Gilbert data and research were also implemented. We targeted neighborhood gatherings, bilingual opportunities. And we also did outreach with flyers, emails, calls, social media, et cetera. So in, all in all, in-person feedback, which is beyond just email and online feedback. We were able to connect with over 450 residents and those included people who needed services as well as those who were providing services and really anybody that was interested in connecting insofar as human services go in your community. And you'll see all of these different entities that were a part of your community. The faith-based sector, certainly, the business sector, educational, neighborhood leaders and so forth. So we'll get to the results. I understand you will be receiving our research report in the, in the coming days. There are 100-plus pages in that report and an executive summary so that you can kind of go toward the area that is, that to guide you in. But universal strengths as, as brought up by the people that we touched, that we talked to. The town of Gilbert is being beautiful, a clean community of caring residents, one where the public safety was heralded as being very positive. The services offered through the Heritage Center, Ascend and the CAP Office were shown to be very positive. Assistance to seniors at Page Commons and those advocates who worked tirelessly on their behalf. Proactive community leaders and those that, that were leaders that weren't just leading, but were also concerned for their residents. And also increased collaboration and partnering to provide critical services. These were all strengths that rose to the top. As far as universal gaps, there were gaps that came up more frequently. The additional need for safe, affordable housing, access to mental health and behavioral health, substance abuse, healthcare and treatment services, solutions to local transportation needs and continuity of follow-up with services, including periodic check-ins, particularly when residents were not connected with the specific agency that was following with them. There was a, a group that emerged, so we were tasked with speaking with 10 different population groups. This group emerged as, as more in need that weren't originally stated in these 10. And these were survivors of domestic violence. I know you all are doing a tremendous job in bringing those needs of survivors to the, to the forefront. And also sexual assault and abuse and human trafficking. Now, as your chief said, the growing concern with, with regarding human trafficking is not for Gilbert, but for the entire East Valley and. And there has been an increase in those cases for the East Valley. And while the majority is occurring online and through phone apps, that the need is to have a proactive, combative approach to this, particularly for Gilbert to take the reins with that, as you do with so many other factors, and to increase educational efforts to note, to prevent people from being prey to that, and also to provide services for that minority that are victimized. Here is the rank ordering of the 10 groups, and these were ranked in order of greatest to least need, but it's not to say that those at the bottom did not need any, didn't have any needs, or that you should rob, you know, needs of the community at the bottom for those at the top, but rather, these were ranked from top to bottom as being just highest needs according to the human services community. You'll see some other people that were mentioned as having needs. Although none of these were standalone emergent groups, certainly, they can be included for future planning and, you know, may rise to the top as their needs progress. So we'll get to the recommendations. We did prioritize them, but we know that, and our research team recognizes that, timing and feasibility have a significant impact on the order of performance. So, you know, we recognize that as we state these one, these dozen recommendations, starting with number one. So the first is really a transitional seamless model for connection into resources and services. So our TWI team has worked in the community in a number of areas with Tempe, Chandler, Surprise, and other cities. And so we did pull in some best practices. We saw your best practices as well that we reflected. But for this one, we really chose to focus on a model for seamless services. We know that your Gilbert Family Advocacy Center, which is currently under study, we put that in there as one of the models to be implemented. One of the ASCEND Center, which is a new center which you erected since our last needs assessment, we see that as a really prime location for one-stop human services insofar as having a navigator to connect to services, even having a support group present, having bilingual housing resource workshops, healthcare. We know Mission of Mercy is being looked at as a possibility of working with that, and also dental care and food insecurity, which some of your residents are experiencing. Recommendation two was really a coordinated program for all of these needs regarding really mental health, behavioral health, and so forth. And we know that you're making plans and moves to welcome these into the community, and we certainly acknowledge that. But really calling in all of the entities who are involved in this particular matter, particularly public safety, providers, schools, faith communities, and families who do a really phenomenal job of helping your residents, but really connecting together with the linkages, to reduce those wait times, to create visible treatment options, to even have available space within the public schools, as your governing board member mentioned. And also, in this was the expansion of Gilbert's focus to address suicides across age groups. So we know that a lot of planning is being done for youth, which is absolutely phenomenal and critical. But there is also some numbers in the community that hit across the ages, and you'll see that in some of the data and the tables that we collected. Really targeting the faith community partners to address those needs and to pull in those faith community partners to bring in and to actually speak with your youth, that was something that was stated. We put in here the recommendation about ASUs, connection and internship ambassadors we spoke about here, and also training, which is evidence-based, to train those ambassadors, which is a really cost-effective strategy to address this concern. And also pulling on some of the state of Arizona's resources, which come at no cost, such as the Arizona WARM line for access, which is a free hotline number that anybody can call in who's experiencing those challenges. Recommendation three, as you saw, and we spoke about that as one of the emergent groups, and really just looking at what can be done to create visible treatment options, visible treatment options and safe spots for anybody experiencing these exploitations or these dangers. Additionally, it was recommended to see about providing a 30-day respite time and counseling for survivors of abuse in addition to the 120 days of shelters. So a lot of the people that have severe trauma hit the ground running when they're in the shelter. They have just a very brief amount of time to really make systemic change. And we know that when they have to hit the ground running with items such as this, often their main issues that they're dealing with get pushed to the forefront. So really get pushed to the bottom, so the idea is to try to get those issues to the forefront, to really get at what the challenges are so that they can make really serious progress into moving past any of the abuse that they have had. The fourth recommendation, we're dealt with youth and connecting with them, particularly those that are low to moderate income, and peer-to-peer programs that are being hosted in the community in a number of ways, but perhaps expanding them to be available for other youth. We talked about rideshare programs. We spoke about Chandler-Gilbert Community College mentoring youth and some of the programs that they have. We spoke about life skills classes. Many of the youth that we spoke with spoke about the need for having curriculum for everyone. There were small pockets of youth that had this, but both the instructors and the youth themselves said, wouldn't it be great if the youth had this and the youth said, we need this for the life skills? So everything from check or how to write a check, how to do a job application, how information on health and balance, even nutrition, student loan debt, how to manage technology and social media, how to make basic meals, financial literacy, entrepreneurship, et cetera. And again, there were some programs we noted in here that are being done, but to a greater extent would be phenomenal. Recommendation five was for safe and affordable housing and emergency housing. And certainly, your town is not alone in this. This is a very critical need across Arizona. And so certainly, particularly with your town, was the need to help assist those who are cost-burdened and currently living at-risk status for either losing their home or for excessive rent increases, emergency short-term temporary shelter, Housing 101 workshops. In some of the older neighborhoods, and we spoke about some ways to kind of tailor those to the people that are in need, Save the Family you support. And they are one of the agencies that rose to the top with their ARM Affordable Rental Movement, so offering reduced-rate income housing, and also long-term wraparound services, Hope for Addiction, and your faith communities were doing phenomenal with that, and we highlighted that. Short and long-term solutions to transportation. I understand your council has been meeting about transportation. There will be some changes going on with that. And depending on what the changes are and how those needs come into play, they could be as simple as bringing the resources to them if the transportation can't be broadened or expanded. So for example, instead of a family member who has to ride the bus for an hour and a half to get to an affordable grocery store, to having a local affordable grocery store in some of the lower-income areas so that that would alleviate a transportation issue. Recommendation seven, preparing for the aging of Gilbert. We spoke about partnerships with Dignity Health, Area Agency on Aging, and the Fall Risk Assessment. We spoke about the Elder Vention Program, the WARM Hotline, and also some of the needs that came directly from the senior residents, self-defense classes, even a phone tree so that the seniors felt safe. And this, again, came directly from your seniors. Recommendation eight, the Barrow Neuro Wellness Special Needs. This is specifically related to special needs, and it's one of the programs that the residents can really take part of, particularly those that are managing some special needs and need that extra support regarding their health. Recommendation nine, awareness plans to develop the communication and awareness of what is out there, to acknowledge and also connect with your residents about all of the wonderful programs and services that are going. And we spoke about many of those recommendations and mechanisms of how to connect according to the people and what they said was needed. Recommendation 10 was a volunteer-based plan. We know that there has been meeting, there have been some meetings and talk about that, and we were really heartened to hear about that. We did make some recommendations for best practices, particularly for a mechanism for sharing and tracking long- and short-term volunteer engagement, because, as you know, residents who need volunteerism or want to connect with them, it is really productive to have it be a long-term volunteer effort as well as those short-term efforts. Recommendation 11 was programs to increase cultural diversity, but also communication about the ways that Gilbert is addressing cultural diversity, so that the residents who do feel the need to experience that diversity know what you are doing to really support that and to boost confidence in that. And we addressed some of those recommendations there. And finally, recommendation 12 was exploring new ways in which four or city could gather together in the community to proactively respond to the needs assessment. And we just appreciate the opportunity to work with you again. We know that there is a lot of work that has been done, a lot of work to be done, and we appreciated seeing the engagement and really the care and concern that you do have for your residents.
We appreciate you and the work that's being done by the Williams Institute to help us understand this. It was so helpful in 2014 to have that needs assessment, to really understand where we could be directing both resources and effort as a community. So thank you for the continued support in that area. Melanie does a terrific job aiding in this area, along with several others within the town department. So I appreciate the insight, and I know that we'll do a lot with that. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you, and thanks for the presentation. I wanted to just ask you a little bit of a follow-up, and I'm not sure if this was in your scope, but did you look at the effectiveness of what we put in place as a response to the prior research and set of recommendations? And is there maybe a 15-second summary of, are we making a dent in the issues that we looked at a few years ago?
Yes, absolutely. And one of the critical issues was getting a central location for services inside Gilbert to reach your residents, and that was one of the biggest dents. And we do have, to answer your question, Councilmember Taylor, on page 33 of the report, there are tables, there's a table that has each recommendation from the 2014 report that also states the recommendation, the status in 2015, and the status in 2019. So we took the effort to look at every recommendation there and also give details about what has been done, what progress has been made, and also, you know, where maybe it could be taken a step further. But yes, each recommendation was made for that. And certainly, you know, the lay of the land has changed, so you'll notice that the recommendations in the current needs assessment are very different than what was originally stated in 2015. But yes, we've seen, particularly with your center there, to be able to connect with your residents in-house, in your town, was especially helpful. I think connecting with the people now and engaging them to receive those services, I think, is the next likely step.
Thank you. I look forward to reading that. I appreciate the follow-up.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the report. The report in 2014 led to two initiatives, which I believe have been impacted significantly, especially with the Heritage Center, but with our team's effort with domestic violence.
Correct.
I know for me, it's been, in a lot of ways, a blessing and a privilege to work that effort. I do want to share with the council that myself and Councilmember Renee Lopez in Chandler and Councilmember Kevin Thompson in Mesa and other community leaders, we actually had our grand opening of the CC Hope Center, which is focused on sex trafficking here in the East Valley. And that office is actually in the downtown. So another, you know, effort for the East Valley to look at that particular unfortunate issue as well.
Yes, and to speak to that, Vice Mayor Cook, that that was one of the other topics that was stated as far as the domestic violence and your focus on that, in minimizing, educating, meaning minimizing the risk, minimizing the victimization, and promoting education and promoting resources. So that was also one of the factors that arose when we did this assessment.
And also my efforts with the MagDV Council. One of our major efforts this coming 2020 is to actually use an organization called Bloom 360 to actually go into the high schools and begin to educate, you know, things about, you know, teen dating and the negative pieces of that. So we've met with the Arizona State Superintendent recently, and again, that's just the beginning of that educational process here in the state of Arizona.
That's, yeah, that's phenomenal here, and you all being such a strong presence in the East Valley can really make a move and be a leader in that and lead Phoenix along with you.
Thank you. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
And I do believe that we did receive the report, so we have Christmas reading to do.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, read the general plan and the needs assessment. All right. That takes us to communications from citizens. Councilmember Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two individuals that would like to speak. We'd like to invite Susan Williams. And again, Jeffrey, do you want to come with Susan as well?
Yes, sir.
All right. If you can state your place of residence for the record, and since you're both there, I think we can give you six minutes to speak. And I do know from the council, we have some handouts here that I'll pass out.
Here you go. Okay. Here?
Yep. You're good.
Okay. Well, my name is Susan Williams, and I want to thank you for the, and this is my reindeer guide dog. You made a presence known. I lived in Gilbert for 20 years. I live at 3534 East Linda Lane. I'm here to talk to you about or at least touch on the subject, the proposed changes to paratransit and the effect that it has on the community that I represent, which is the visually impaired and blind. I work for Foundation for Blind Children. I serve as an academic liaison for the college and visually impaired students in our state. And I had a look at their transcripts today from this fall semester, and they are quite amazing. And all of those students are just amazing. You give them a little bit of training, a little bit of technology, a little bit of coaching, accommodations, and they far out exceed their sighted peers. And I'm talking like 4.0 magnificum laude stuff. It's a little bit of my world. The other part of my world is the reduction in paratransit that's being proposed greatly affects the blind and visually impaired community in that that's a community that has no other choice to travel about other than using paratransit. You, and that reduction does affect me by one-eighth of a mile. I am with, I'm one-eighth of a mile too far outside the boundary. That will affect me, my ability to get to and from work and serve my community at what I do, and teach and share what was imparted to me, and to impart that and turn to other adults who've lost their vision along the way. I have not always been blind my whole life. I lost my vision about 15 years ago. I lived, I had normal vision all my life, drove and ran a business, raised my children, and my vision slipped. And I thought, oh, my gosh, now what? And I don't think things happen by chance, but I came upon an amazing program at Foundation for Blind Children for adults, for adults who've lost their vision. And they managed to put me back together, sent me off to college, and asked me to come back and work for them in 2012 as an academic liaison. I'm just asking you to be mindful when this decision comes about, to think about the population of people that this is going to impact, and keep in mind that that... And keep in mind that that, this population of people has no other choice but to use paratransit to get about. One of the things that we do teach is independence, stepping out, putting your foot out on that water, and it's a little scary at first. But I travel to and fro, I travel to and from Phoenix every day. We leave at 5:15 in the morning. I'm usually home at 5:00. Initially, my family thought I was crazy. Now they think nothing of it. Cam and I leave in the morning, and we come home, and that's my day. And I'm just one, I am just one of some amazing, successful, and effective visually impaired and blind people. And that's all I wanted to say.
Hi, I'm Jeff. My wife's my hero. She lost her vision, went to blind skilled training, college, got a job, and in her job, she helps people go through exactly what she went through. And all that was enabled because of the paratransit transportation capability that is being proposed to be reduced. The letter in your package, Valley Metro leaves two other options, neither of which will work for someone with a disability who everyday commutes to school or everyday commutes to work. For one, it's too expensive, the one option is too expensive. It only goes five miles. If you work downtown, you get to pay the regular fees on top of the $5 allowance. The other option is shared transportation, and Susan has done that before. It's taken between, with the shared transportation from Gilbert to Phoenix where she works, it takes between two and a half hours to three hours to get to work and home from work. So those are fails. You can't do that every day. We had the privilege of going to the Transportation Committee meeting yesterday. They were very gracious. One of the things that was presented was the capital improvement process and transportation funding streams. And believe it or not, I didn't see anything in there having to do with public transportation and increases in public transportation services in Gilbert, such as an additional route, so on and so forth. There's a map in your package that shows a couple of gray areas, and because of their reduction from townwide to the within three-quarters of a mile of a existing route, those areas are, will not have the transportation service she's been using. Uh-oh.
Okay, if you just want to wrap up, that would be great. Thanks.
Okay, and we'll wrap it up. She, one additional small route, will eliminate that whole area. Anyway, there are things that could be done, and we're just asking that the council look at this. Valley Metro scheduled three meetings. It's in your package, and their documentation reads as though Gilbert's shoulder-to-shoulder with them on this subject. And I'm not sure that's really true. We just wanted to make the council aware of the issue and ask for your help. And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, and thanks for being here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We will follow up as well. The consent calendar, that takes us to the consent agenda. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to pull Agenda Item 17A. With that, I move that we approve Agenda Item 2, 2A, 2B, 3 through 17, 17B, 18 through 22.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Please vote. Councilmember Ray?
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Ray votes yes. That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to Agenda Item 17.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more of a comment for 17A. The comment's really for the public, and I just want to be as kind and gentle as I share this. The dream of the Big League Dreams many, many years ago was really about building community and making human connections. And I believe that, you know, for the end-users that used the facility in their early days, it was fantastic and going very well. And then, like with any kind of partnership, I believe, you know, there needs to be always constant communications with whoever we're working with. And the unfortunate part is that that partnership between the town in Gilbert and the organization Big League Dreams Gilbert didn't go as well, which leads to where we're at today. And this particular agenda item that we're going to be voting on basically puts an end to that relationship. And, you know, a year ago, we basically opened up the Cactus Yards. That's now been relabeled, and it's been going fantastic. And that dream that happened many years ago is returned to Gilbert. And Robert's team with the Parks and Recs have done a fantastic job in making that dream come to reality as we had dreamed way back when. And I think it's actually even better than it's ever been before. And to this council and Patrick's leadership, you know, I think we want to, I want to just extend a thanks to all of us for saying yes to this project and keeping it in-house. So anyways, the hard part about this one is that we were able to recover damages from the construction company a number, a couple of years ago. As we have learned, as we have learned that the market or the fair market of companies and what they do with creating all sorts of different types of companies, to recover any other types of monies would be hard for us. And so I think it's best for us as a council to approve of this agenda item. Let's move forward to our, to the wonderfulness of the Cactus Yards, and let's celebrate, you know, the future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there a motion on Agenda Item 17A?
Move that we approve Agenda Item 17A.
Second.
A motion in a second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. I believe that completes the consent agenda and moves us to the public hearing items. Are there any requests for any councilmember to pull a public hearing item, 23, 24, 25, 26, or 26A?
26A, please.
Okay. Anything else? All right, I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 23, 24, 25, and 26, and close the public hearing on those agenda items and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve Agenda Items 23, 24, 25, and 26.
Second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote as well and takes us to 26A. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. This item has to do with a pretty complex matter regarding licensing agreements with, Cox is the carrier that keeps coming up on this one here. I do believe that this does align with the intent of the bill that's kind of having us revisit this. And as I look at and hear from staff on a lot of the different arguments, I think a lot of them are valid, but I think they're missing one of the most important points. You know, a lot of the arguments are circulating around fairness, and that's important. And what I'd like to see is, you know, how we look at this from the taxpayer's standpoint. I mean, at the end of the day, that's why we're here. We represent them. And here's where I think we might be needing some additional data from staff. Seems like this thing pops up. The purpose of a tax is to cover a cost, right? At the end of the day. So whether this is 3.5% or 5%, that should translate to the actual cost that our taxpayers are bearing to maintain these easements. And at a basic level, that's really the essence here of why this is. And as I drilled into the data here and asked, well, do we know what our costs really are? You know, maybe we need 6% or maybe it's only 1%, right? It sounds like we had some data maybe 10 or so years ago. It's a little bit outdated. I do think we should move forward with this, but I do also think we should get our arms around what really is the cost of the town on these easements. And then if it makes sense for us to lower this, to cover those, I think we should do that because we know whatever the taxes, the carrier is just going to pass it right along to our residents. So we can benefit our residents quite a bit if we put it really at that break-even point. And if we have that data, then we can really set the level of this tax to an appropriate level. So I wanted to just make that comment. It seems like this pops up every couple of years, and we don't really have a handle on really the core issue of how much really is this costing the taxpayers to do that. And so maybe that's some data that we can look at down the road. But happy to move to approve this whenever you think you're ready for a motion, Mayor. But thank you.
Mayor, thank you. You know, I think we've talked about this quite a bit. I think from my view, instead of trying to create the legislation based upon their revenue intake and you taxing the revenue, to me, it should be even simpler. It should be based upon the square feet of worth they use of their lines and so forth, and it should be a flat fee. Make it simple, make it a flat fee, and not worry about this formula based upon the revenues and what you can take, not take, and so forth. And it will become fair for anyone that wants to use any town right-of-way, we charge the same thing. I mean, that's just my perspective of that. Makes it simple and easy for everyone to consume.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd just like to add that we're really merely following state law in this, and so this isn't something that Gilbert designed. We really are just trying to follow state law as it relates to this. So we don't have a ton of latitude. The state and legislature has determined that this is their purview and not necessarily ours. And while we may agree or disagree to that statement, I can certainly understand the practicality of having a uniform license agreement. And so I think that's the effort that we're moving forward. If we do proceed with Councilmember Taylor's recommendation, I think I might just want to add one more component of that, and that is the opportunity cost associated with this. The way that I look at it is the utility right-of-way is an asset that the taxpayers own. We are administering that for them, but they own that asset. That asset does have value. And so if we're assigning a value to that asset, it's not merely just to, you know, enrich private companies, but that's a value that our taxpayers have invested in. And so there should be some return on that value. And so I think there's a lot of different ways to look at it. We've talked a little bit about how we could maximize that value and provide better service for our residents. I don't exactly know what that looks like yet, but I think it's worth exploring. So I'd like to just add to that recommendation of Councilmember Taylor that there be another component that we also look at as we do that exercise. All right, with that, we can entertain a motion. Oh, I will close the public hearing, sorry, on it. And item, got mixed up here, 26A, and entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second. Please vote.
Yes.
That motion carries with a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That moves us to administrative items. We have a presentation. I think it's by Glenn. Yeah, Glenn? You're in charge? You're the boss of this? All right, Agenda Item 27. We'll invite Glenn Schlotman to the podium to present on tourism.
I think this is Councilmember Scott's favorite topic.
Well, I'm Glenn Schlotman. I'm the tourism administrator for the town of Gilbert. We're here today to talk about tourism and the related bed tax strategies. We focus on four audiences that align with family-friendly, with a family-friendly community, and we're identified through a thorough and thorough planning process. They are visiting friends and family, which most of us know right now because we're entertaining them at our homes, youth and amateur sports, business travelers, and Gilbert shares of Arizona's 45 million annual overnight visitors and local day trippers as well. Those visitors to Gilbert are, and more specifically Legislative District 12, contributed $243 million in visitor spending in 2018. That's up 8.5% from the year prior. And those financial contributions account for 1.1% of market share in Arizona's largest export industry. Over the course of a year, we asked visitors in Gilbert to rate their satisfaction with the destination, and they have a 98% satisfaction rate. 88% plan to return in the next 12 months, and 93 would recommend Gilbert to others. Similarly, the enthusiasm, it's similar to the enthusiasm that residents have in Gilbert. Visitors have that same enthusiasm for Gilbert as a destination. And that enthusiasm is feeding the continued growth of Gilbert's hotel supply. With the addition of four hotels in the last year, Gilbert has nearly 400,000 room nights available annually. And with that, I'll move on to Kelly to cover the bed tax revenues.
Because Glenn knows that I love to talk about finances. So bed taxes is, as you know, what is the taxes paid for when you stay at a place for less than 30 consecutive days, hotels, motels, venues like that. In Gilbert, we receive under $1 billion a year. Some of our peer communities are receiving up to about $22 million a year. So there is a vast difference in the amount of revenue that's able to be reinvested back into the community among these different areas. Bed tax has both a restricted and an unrestricted component. So as you know, when you stay in a hotel, you first pay yourselves tax, which in Gilbert is 1.5%. And then our bed tax is 2.8%. The first half percent of the bed tax is unrestricted, so we can use that for our general operating of our general fund and town operations. The 2.3% above that is restricted and has to be used for tourism purposes according to state statute. So in Gilbert, what is the difference between the restricted and unrestricted? That restricted portion last year was about $600,000. We anticipate that that will continue to grow as we've received a lot of new hotels over the past year and anticipate we will receive some new hotels into the future as well. So probably between $600,000 to just under $1 million a year over the next 10, 15 years. So a good amount of money. These restricted revenues, according to statute, can be used for basically three purposes: to promote tourism with direct expenditures, or we can contract with other organizations to promote tourism, or we can use it to develop, improve, or operate a tourism-related facility or attraction, such as Cactus Yards in our case. For Gilbert's case, we have been using our restricted revenues to support the debt service at Cactus Yards. Good news is, next year is our last payment on that facility. And so what we need from council is some advice or recommendation on how do we use the money moving forward. We have some options that we can recommend that would provide maybe the best bang for the buck in Gilbert or some ways that we could use the money. One would be to develop a capacity at the sports fields, so additional fields at Desert Sky, for example. We could use the funding for that to help close some of the gap that we have between our existing funding sources and what would be needed to finish that facility. We can do CIP projects with trail connections or trail lighting. There are a few projects that have that ability. These projects that we have listed were currently listed as future potential bonds, and so it would help reduce that need in the future if we were to use these bed tax dollars for that in place of it. We can partner with a hotel or with a conference We can partner with a hotel or with a conference center, which would take $7 to $21 million of one-time funding in that partnership. We can do a public art or placemaking in the Heritage District, which would be probably $10,000 to $50,000 a year of investment there. Or we can support the operating expenditures at Cactus Yards, which has a gap of about $800,000 a year. So lots of really good options. The staff recommendation would be to help support the art down in the Heritage District to continue to grow that area as a vibrant place and placemaking for the Town of Gilbert. And then also to help develop additional fields and fill that gap at Desert Sky Park. So we would be able to do probably $4 or $5 million towards that facility, saved up of bed tax money before we were constructing that facility. And then we could work from there on what we wanted to do with funds moving forward. That brings us really to the question of some direction from council on where to use these funds after we finish paying debt service at Cactus Yards.
Thank you, Kelly and Glenn. It's time to talk about strategy here. And I, there might be questions. Councilmember Taylor?
Well, I don't have a question, but I have a thought, an answer to the question they're asking us, if I could share that, Mayor. I want to connect this to some of the things that we learned in the Human Needs Assessment, maybe take a different angle on this, right? When I was on, one of the commissions that had the last Williams Institute report, when we talk about human trafficking, we heard from an agency, it's slipping my mind, about how during this time of year, unfortunately, with all of the bowl games and all of the championships, yeah, there's a spike in human trafficking. And most of the harvesting is done at the district high schools. And there's some in Gilbert that are targets. So I guess I'm just connecting the dots between this and the other presentation is maybe some, if we want tourism, right? But there's a dark side to tourism, and that's human trafficking. We know it's here. You can talk to Bill Montgomery, the county attorney, and they've been on that big time, and they partner with our police department on some things. But perhaps some money could go to that as well. We've had discussions about SROs as well. They will play a huge role in that. But when we talk about tourism, there's a great side, and this is a wonderful idea, but there's also a side that I think we should consider mitigating as well. That's really part and parcel, that you can't separate these two. But Mayor, let me just throw that idea out as another option here with perhaps an SOR funding source.
Question of clarification for the restricted and unrestricted funds. Can you clarify? Because it sounds like there might be a tie there, but I'm not sure that it would qualify.
Mayor, you're exactly right. We would probably have to get a review of that, but at first blush, I would recommend doing those types of activities with our unrestricted funds, if that's something we want to grow with our general fund dollars. On the restricted side, we are tied to direct expenditures to promote tourism itself or partnering with another organization or operation of a facility that promotes tourism.
How about some expenditures added our greatest assets in the community? I know the visitor center at the Preserve has been in the CIP for 10, 15 years, and it keeps getting moved out. I think we could spend some money doing that, and we'd certainly benefit as a community from that.
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson? Yes, that would certainly be an eligible expenditure, and we could look at that. In our recommendations here, we were focusing on the ones that were the soonest in the CIP and would offset maybe funding sources like bond funds or other things to help reduce tax burdens in other areas.
Vice Mayor?
So I know about six or seven years ago, we had, as a team, looked at the possibility of going out to RFP to have a third-party organization actually focused on tourism. And that those bed tax dollars that were restricted, I believe, would possibly go to that type of organization. So if you go back to the chart that showed the increase in our dollars, it seems like we have a nice, healthy increase over the next number of years. Are we at a point where we might want to revisit that and let a team that's really focused on? I know we have Glenn here, but I'm not saying we're playing out of business, but again...
Glenn, we're keeping you. Despite what Vice Mayor Cook just made that sound like. Merry Christmas.
But anyways, I just, you know, are we at a point where, again, just thinking out of the box, do we want to maybe possibly relook at that?
We do partner regionally. Do you want to talk about that, Glenn, and the partnership that we have that promotes your East Valley as a whole?
Sure, Mayor and councilmembers, no offense taken. I understand these things are natural progressions. So the line of service here, just to be clear, we've had tourism as a paid line of service for two years now. So in the order of magnitude of other cities, we're very young in the system. There are a lot of partnerships in place. We work closely with our regional partners, Mesa Chandler, Tempe. Especially, we're working more and more on the sports side because of our ability to collaborate and then compete with some of the other communities throughout the valley and make sure that we're holding our own there. That's something we are doing a lot of efforts on, as well as working with the state organization, Arizona Office of Tourism. But I do hope that someday Gilbert has a dedicated department that works on tourism like some of the other groups do.
I really do like Councilmember Anderson's thought process here. Riparian is one of our most visited parks in the system. I would love to explore that a little bit further and perhaps for next year, recognizing that we need a strategy, the development of that portion of our CIP, the visitor center, would take a little bit more time and effort than I think we already have. So perhaps we look at something for next year as it relates to some design and development and planning for that type of thing, and then the Heritage District art. I recognize the need for fields for sure at Desert Skies. I just feel like we might have an additional funding source or maybe a different funding source for that type of activity. And so might make that suggestion that we move forward, at least for next year. We can revisit once we understand more of the design portion of the visitor center. But I'm also really hesitant to add things to our plate for next year, like really worried about that. I'm looking at the pace of the community right now and how much, how many projects we have going. So I do hesitate in some way to add, but maybe it's the very preliminary first steps for the visitor center. Does that sound like a plan? We have a lot on our plate next year, and I'm reminding myself of that every day. We have to learn how to say no. We're not good at that.
Mayor, just tossing out another idea, maybe it's not an additional, I mean, regional park, I think we were all surprised at the increase in costs there. So maybe without adding, since that's already on the plate, maybe this is very small, but a contribution that could help towards some of those things.
We're spending that money on filters for the splash pad, I think.
Yeah, exactly.
From what I understand. Maybe not right now, it's too cold.
Going to be a big tourism drive.
Mayor, I have a question. Hey, Kelly, as it relates to these funds and rolling over, let's say we don't spend the restricted funds, what are the rules from the state that says about rolling funds over from year to year and so forth?
Great question, Mayor, Vice Mayor Cook. We're not aware of any restrictions on holding the funds to roll them over and spending them for a specific purpose, as long as they are spent for the purposes outlined in statute.
Okay.
Well, then maybe if it's okay with the council, I usually don't do this, but suggest that we make a motion to, can you go back to the staff recommendations, so we make sure we get this right? That we do the public art and placemaking component of that, and then...
Now, Mayor, there is also something that we put in with the parks, which may be qualified for tourism. I know that we had the additional trees that was going to Riparian Center. Does that qualify as a tourism component where we're helping that out? Because I know we have a placeholder for that in the budget and so forth.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I think we are working with our unrestricted funds to improve shade in the town. We would probably have to do some thinking on the connection of the trees and shade with tourism specifically.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, Mayor. One thing that we discussed in the past year was a possibility of connecting the parking lots at the Southeast Regional Library. And along with the tourism possibilities and the visitor center for the Riparian, which we know is already a really popular place, I'd love to move that up on our list because I think if we're going to build that, look at that visitor center and bring more people in there, we need a place for them to park. And I'd love to see us maybe do that all at one time and start working on that at this point.
Does that feel like direction from us at this point? We kind of threw out a lot of ideas, but I think we are rallying around the public art and placemaking. I think you're hearing an investment, a willingness to invest in that, and then looking more at the visitor center and the parking lot. And again, we don't want to add anything major to anyone's plate for 2020, but perhaps we allow those funds to roll over and look at that as a project that we could do in 2021 or early, early 2022. That's going to be hard to say, a lot, 2022. Does that sound like good direction? Do you need a motion?
It does, so.
Okay. All right, who wants to make it or say so?
Can I just say a motion to what Mayor just said, that we, we don't need a motion? Oh, I'm getting the, I'm getting the, okay then, just do what Mayor said then. We agree with the direction that Mayor gave.
Mayor, councilmembers, we will bring this forward in the budget, and then you'll have the opportunity to formally vote on that and approve it at that time.
I like it when they say, do what the mayor says. That's feeding my ego right now. Okay, we're good.
How about a motion to put the bed tax back to what it was originally?
Can't do that, it's not agendaized, carry on.
Done, done.
There we go. Glenn, Kelly, thank you guys.
Can I slap his hand real quick here?
No, we're going to slap yours, because Glenn's job is safe and secure here.
No, but his is on the unrestricted funds.
Glenn, we're grateful for your work. You've really added a tremendous amount, especially the Discover Gilbert component and some of the other things that you've worked on. I mean, it's really been great, so thank you. We know that Councilmember Cook was just teasing. All right, are there any boards, commission, and committee reports from the council?
Mayor, I would like to do a committee report on the LDC update. So Vice Mayor Cook, myself, and Councilmember Ray have been meeting with our staff diligently every two to three weeks for this entire year. And our senior planner, Amy Thames, was a little upset because she thought that she had promised you a draft of the LDC here in December, and here we are at the last meeting of December, and we don't have that draft. And I will tell you why, because we have taken such a deep dive into that document, and there is still one big chapter for residential that is going to take some time to accomplish. And so Amy had suggested that maybe we bring everything else forward to a draft form and take care of it and vote on it. And I actually suggested that we wait and do it all at one time. And I said that I did not think that you would have a problem with us, just even if it takes out to maybe May, because of the fact that once we are finished with it as a committee, then it needs to go to legal. And Nancy Davidson has indicated it'll probably take her a good month, month and a half to get through it all because it's so intense. And then we'd like to bring the whole thing back to you at one time, so.
That's terrific. I've been so pleased with the progress and recognize that that was a huge undertaking on top of the general plan update and on top of the building codes process. And I mean, like I said, the vast load of work that we've been carrying here at the town. So yes, please take your time to do it right, and I'm excited to see the final document. I've heard great things so far, and I'm excited for your efforts, so thank you. Yes, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. So there is an organization called Landscape Structures that highlights playgrounds. And guess what's on the cover of their document? They look at all these fantastic, fantastic playgrounds around the country. And right here is the Gilbert Regional Park on the cover of Landscape Structures publication. So Robert, I know you and I have chatted about this at the Parks Meeting, but I wanted to share this with the council that, once again, Gilbert is highlighted nationally as having a fantastic park here in Gilbert.
Great job. All right, we do have one policy item, agenda item 29. Don't believe this is...
So moved.
All right, thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
Please vote. That motion carries with a 6-0 vote. I think I heard Councilmember Ray is not on the phone. All right, thank you. Okay, we have a few future meeting agenda items, so those will all come in 2021, we're sure of it. Our town manager, Patrick, with the bow tie that he had to YouTube to figure out how to tie, would you like to bring in some updates?
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I appreciate the feedback on my fashion attire, and I don't know that many people can pull off fashion and Christmas cheer all in one piece of clothing, but I'm pretty sure I nailed it, so thank you. I also appreciate for the councilmen who dropped by my office earlier tonight to drop off a Christmas gift for that. Thank you, but you all also independently referred to me as the Grinch as you did so.
Well, you got coal in those presents, just letting you know.
It didn't even feel coordinated, so it was the worst part, so thank you for that. Just a couple of things before we wrap up the year. We had Gilbert Fire and Rescue lost a gentleman who spent 25 years with the department, J.C. Hicks, passed away. And so we just wanted to remember him and his family, especially at this time around Christmas. He was one of the early firefighters in Gilbert and will be missed by all. Also, I wanted to take a moment to introduce our new Director of Intergovernmental Affairs, Rob Boer, and ask him to come up to the mic and introduce himself to you.
I think he forgot his bow tie.
Is that a slow walk?
I don't know what that is. That was just like...
Long ways around. I sat in the worst spot possible. Mayor and council, thank you very much. I'm really honored to be in this position of Intergovernmental Affairs Director. Gilbert has always had a magnificent reputation. I've always really been enamored with this town from an outside perspective. And now that I've had a week to actually be in the position, I can really say I'm standing for Gilbert. It's just being able to witness the culture of the town and how dedicated and how much energy all of the department directors and all the staff have, it's really been impressive. And, you know, testament to you guys and your leadership, as well as Patrick and the whole leadership team. I mean, it's really been incredible to witness the culture early on and how much energy and enthusiasm everybody has. I've known my predecessor, Renee, for quite some time, but it's been great spending the week with him and getting a great idea of kind of how, you know, the ins and outs of the role specific to Gilbert. You know, Renee's always been an expert from everything local and regional to global issues like Brexit, for instance.
Now we know. Okay, that's an inside joke, and I'll have to explain it to the residents, but I'll do it as soon as you're done. Can carry on.
But honestly, I know how big issues I have to fill, and I look forward to doing that. The good news is, is I've got an amazing team that's been put in place that I get to inherit that will help a lot. So I look forward to working with all of you and getting to know all of you better and happy to be here. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob. You did great.
Wait, wait a minute, you can't, you can't walk away. You have to still stay here as we...
So we haze our employees when they join our team in Gilbert by giving them a challenge word, so that when they introduce themselves, they have to work in a challenge word. And I've heard everything from like kangaroo to now Brexit. Am I right? Did we guess right? Brexit and standing? Standing and Brexit, okay, that was...
Remember, we have flex capacitor.
Oh, that's right. One year we had flex capacitor. Yeah, so welcome to the team. You've now passed the first test of being part of it, and we're excited. I owe Mayor Georgia Lord and Goodyear, now I have to do something nice for her. I owe Mayor Georgia Lord in Goodyear, now I have to do something nice for her, because we've stolen you from Goodyear. Goodyear and Gilbert, they're really similar. Every once in a while, you're going to make a mistake. Don't worry, we will correct you. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. I guarantee you that Mayor Lord will make sure you hear about it the next time.
Yes, I know. I know, I'm going to owe her.
So apparently, standing means you're like obsessed with something. I don't know. It's a kid's term, I guess.
Okay. My kids just keep saying, "Okay, boomer." Like, that's their thing right now, so there you have it. All right, report from council on current events. All right, and I do not have anything to add, other than we hope our community has a very Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and a very safe New Year as well. It sure has been an incredible year for us in the Town of Gilbert, and we always stand back and reflect on the long list of things that we can be proud of, but nothing that we're more proud of than the way that our residents have reached out and helped one another, especially during this time of year. So thank you to each of you, and we'll see you next year.